Hey, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Monday, May 23rd School Committee Meeting here at Colbert. Public comments is now the beginning of our agenda. Is anybody in the room who has any public comment? No, is there anyone online, Mr. Lee?
Apparently, there is not. There is one attendee who does not appear to have her hand up.
Okay. Moving right into routine matters. Approval of open session meetings for May 2nd. Are there any amendments, changes? None, do I have a motion for approval?
Some move, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon and a second by Ms. Cobbleman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Moving on to communications and commendations. Mr. Lee.
Madam Chair, I'm going to turn this over to Assistant Superintendent Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Thank you, Chairperson, Ms. Heger. I am thrilled to be here tonight to talk to the committee about four different academic awards and induction programs that have happened recently since our previous meeting. I'm going to take them in order of when they happened, so not in order of importance, because they are all fantastic events. The first one I wanted to talk to you about tonight was the National Honor Society inductions. It took place back on April 12th. We inducted 67 students into our chapter of the National Honor Society. I would like to thank advisor and Master of Ceremonies Kyle Fredericks had led that ceremony. It was a great evening, one that we look forward to year after year. So again, there were 67 students who ended up making it into National Honor Society, which is quite a distinction for all of the students involved there. The second ceremony that I wanted to talk to you about was the World Language National Honor Society inductions. That ceremony took place on April 28th. This year, we had 53 students inducted for Spanish and 38 seniors were honored for Spanish as well that same evening. We had 11 students inducted into the World Language National Honor Society for French and 19 seniors were honored for their work in the French National Honor Society as well. Again, I'd like to thank both the advisors and the Masters of Ceremony from that evening. We had both Jessica Noon and Hillary Carpanella, who were leading the ceremonies. That was a great evening. If you look up on your screen, we actually do have two photos, the one on the top and then the one on the bottom right are from specifically the World Language National Honor Society induction. Following that, we had the Art National Honor Society induction ceremony, which took place on May 9th. We had seven students who were all seniors who were inducted into the Art National Honor Society. The picture on your screen in the bottom left-hand corner is from that evening. And I'd like to thank both the advisor and Master of Ceremonies Nick McGowan, who has taken that over with Heidi Hurley's retirement. And finally, this past week, on May 19th, we had the Academic Achievement Awards, where we had 150 students handing out 192 awards. And we got it done in about two hours. So it was a really fantastic evening. The entire event was organized by Dr. Gorman Lee, Director of Social Studies, and Principal Doctor Chris Scully was serving as Master of Ceremonies. We had all of the academic directors there presenting awards that evening, which again was a great event. It was a mix of our teachers honoring a particular student from each one of their classes, as well as the individual department awards that are given for a number of different reasons and are some of our class awards happened that evening as well. So great celebration of certainly all the hard work that has been happening this past school year and for many students over there, one year through four years at Braintree High School. So again, I wanted to thank all of the teachers and all of their hard work that they've put into all of these great events, certainly the families who have supported the students in making it and then the students themselves. Thank you.
Ms. Miller. Also in your packets this evening, you will find the Finance and Operations approved minutes from the last subcommittee meeting. You'll also find an invitation from South Middle School. As I believe you all know, every year, South Middle School puts on a Memorial Day Assembly and it's Friday, May 27th at 1:00. They will be doing so again. If you have the opportunity and the time, it is certainly a very well-done event that was started a long time ago by the previous principal at South Middle School, but Mr. Rainey has continued that tradition and students and the staff do an excellent job. So again, if you are available, I encourage you to go. Last commendations that we have for this evening really relate to recognizing two people who sit on the committee who will certainly be graduating and no longer going to be with us. So Lauren Tapesta and Jack Mitchell are seniors. Tomorrow is their last day of classes, as you can tell by their smiling faces. But we obviously wanted to take a moment to thank you for your time and your input and all the feedback that you provided to the committee. And Chairperson Heger has some lovely parting gifts, but I just want to express our gratitude for all that you've done for us.
We have a commendation for both of you. Braintree Public Schools Certificate of Commendation proudly awarded to Mark and Jack. Congratulations. The Braintree School Committee is pleased to award you the certificate of commendation for your contribution to our schools. Please accept our sincere appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell us a little about where you're going.
I'm going to Assumption University in Worcester, majoring in secondary education.
I'm going to Fairfield University, Connecticut, and I'm majoring in finance and economics.
You've been enjoying all the end-of-year festivities?
Really fun. Sad to see it all leave, but I've enjoyed myself.
Not over yet.
Thank you.
It is.
That was a lot of commendations. I personally would like to thank you, obviously, for volunteering. One of you, was it Lauren that was on for two years?
Yeah.
You've been on for two years. So thank you very much for your participation. You know, all of us, we've said many times, have not been in high school for quite a few years. So we appreciate your input. We appreciate your contribution. So thank you all. And I appreciate, I think it was the last school committee that came up with your reports, where you actually come to the school committee and give a report about what's going on in high school. So again, thank you very much. I hope I look really good on my resume. I hope to help you get into college.
Secondary education.
Exactly, yeah. Very important, yes. Very, very important. And I know there's a lot of commendations tonight, so I also want to say congratulations to all the academic achieve, all those who received academic achievements. I did have an opportunity to go to the NHS induction and it's one of my favorite events. They honor, they honor a teacher, and it was Mr. Pelletier, who teaches APUSH, which is Advanced Placement U.S. History. And his speech, he had me a little emotional. So it was really wonderful to have them all, is it, what is the term that they use when they honor somebody who's made a difference to help them get to where they are? What do they call those?
Testimonial?
Summer parents, which I thought was wonderful, a lot with teachers, summer siblings.
A mix of personalities in their lives that.
That have had an impact and helped them. It's a very moving ceremony, so I thank everybody who organized that. I don't know if anybody else on the committee has anything else they want to add to commendations or would like to congratulate on, Jack?
Thank you.
Make a course. Mr. Devon?
Thank you. I've always felt that being a member of this committee, obviously, it's, there's a collaboration between many different groups and different stakeholders. I got to tell you, some of the best opinions we get are from the students themselves because it's unvarnished. It comes not, it's not a finished product, but the thought process that goes into it, knowing that you're going to be representative of the other students, I find it invaluable because it's been more than a year or two since I was in high school. I think they called it something different back then. But it was, you know, it's been so long that you do kind of lose touch, but you guys freshen things up and it's greatly appreciated to hear opinions and your values and things like that because we are changing citizenry, so to speak. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Devon. Make a course.
Thank you. Well, first of all, congratulations. And you know, I think it's quite a commitment that you guys have made, a lot of other things you could be doing. And I think it's important to have input that comes directly from you, the students. And we've had some, you know, many changes in the last couple of years and COVID was a difficult task. And you know, I'm really, we're really fortunate to have you guys as part of our committee and we wish you the best. And hopefully, we'll see you back teaching someday.
I hope.
For now. And you'll be traveling the world. Thank you lots, Lauren. But congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Sowers.
Congratulations to the two of you. You know, you've been through a tough, tough high school. You know, you've made it through and you're on the back end as soon as you get through exams. I wish you all the best. Try your hardest in school, focus on what you want to do in the future and you know, always welcome to come back.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair. I would just like to say thank you for the time that you spent on school nights, sitting through sometimes very long meetings, when I'm sure you have a lot of other things on your list to do. It really is a tribute to you that you made that commitment and followed through on it and I wish you the best of luck next year. Thank you.
Yes, okay. I have one question about the South Middle School Memorial Day invitation. Do we need to irish Vicky? I'm going to show up.
You can just show up. Just before, I mentioned that I did look at the weather. It might be inside. Forecast is it all after.
Thank you for that. Any other comments or anything else?
Just say about two things, the South Middle School Memorial Day function that they have is just a piece of it. I mean, it's amazing what Ed McDonough began and you know, my, my boys both went to South and you know, they got to bring in someone that, you know, they collaborated as a group and each brought someone in that was either a family member, a friend that was in combat. And, and it's amazing what the students learned from those veterans. So that's one big, big piece of it. And they do an entire report on them and you know, it just happened to be one of my cousins that was, was, you know, the veteran that was chosen for my son, Michael and his friends. So they learned a lot. And you know, it's interesting because when he got deployed, you know, he has four kids, young, and they were all like holding on to him in this picture in the Herald of Globe or something like that. It was just, it was pretty, pretty sad day for him. Fortunately, he came back. But it's a, it's a very impressive program that really connects the kids directly to veterans. And I think it's healing for both the veterans that have served in combat, as well as it's informational and for the students. And then as far as the, I missed, I wasn't here for the Honor Society and I just remembered my wife had this pin she put on when my sons got in and like, what's that? So apparently, I didn't participate in that particular ceremony when I was in high school, but it is an incredible achievement to be, to be in the Honor Society. And I, you know, it's, it's a lot of hard work that goes on. So congratulations to all those students and you know, and then when you look at the Honor Society for our language, you know, my oldest son was, was in that Spanish. And I think it had a lot to do with the fact that he was really good friends with the Hurley's and they helped him all the way home to make sure that they ended up in there. But you know, congratulations all. It's quite an achievement. Thank you.
Any else? I also want to mention that Ms. Solinch is a veteran, so we have an intern on this.
Were you in, were you in National Honor Society too?
All right, moving on. Gifts to school. All right, I'm going to read all of these gifts to school if we can do one motion at the end. Base date textiles, seven checks totaling $475. Manatequah School Kindergarten Center, gifts to school totaling 2 million, I wish, $2,990.49. One check in the amount of $1,312.49 from the one fundraiser. One check in the amount of $400 from a grant from Arvela Insurance Company. Checks and cash totaling $1,278 from the MSKC gear fundraiser. Braintree High School Gifts to Schools, $250. One check in the amount, $250 from Milton Stores for men as a booth sponsor for the 2022 Credit for Life. Braintree High School Athletic Department fundraiser, gifts to schools totaling $22,002.54. Four checks totaling $230 from girls golf team. Checks and cash totaling $480 from the BHS foster gymnastics. Checks in total, cash totaling $14,036.4 from boys baseball. Checks and cash totaling $1,530 from girls softball. Checks and cash totaling $1,400 from Braintree High School Rugby. Checks and cash totaling $4,326.50 from BHS wrestling. Hallas Elementary School Gifts to School totaling $222.52. A donation of $108 for DEI books to be used by staff and displayed in the DEI library and a donation of $114.52 for Scholastic magazines to be used by multiple classes for additional instructions and resources. Flaherty Elementary School Gift to School, $7,500. An anonymous donor, which I would like to thank this anonymous donor very much, an anonymous donor donated an updated sound system, including new control panel, wireless and wearable mics, Bluetooth capacity, installation and training to the cafamatorium valued at approximately $7,500. And then Liberty School Gift to School, $1,200. Donation of a motor pathway to the Liberty PTO valued at $1,200. With that, do I have a motion to accept all gifts to schools?
Some move, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon and a second by Ms. Cobbleman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. And as always, we are extremely grateful for all of these gifts. Moving on, from Superintendent's staff, administrative updates. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. This evening, we are very excited to introduce to you Sarah Kaufman, who is here this evening. As the search process to replace one Ed Cronin is near its end. Mr. Cronin, you know, as we move forward, first and foremost, I'd like to thank you for all the work that you've done on behalf of the district. His ability to keep things running through good and bad times has really been a boon for the district and a lot of the major projects that you all know about are really moving along smoothly because of Ed Cronin. And so I start by thanking him. But his credit, he's out of here and he's going to be driving down that highway in that black car much faster than I can go. So we had a search committee that consisted of Ed Cronin, Assistant Superintendent Courtney Miller, myself, Hillary Lawless, and Ms. Heger, who interviewed multiple candidates for the position. And we are excited this evening to introduce to you Sarah Kaufman. Sarah, you want to just come up here and have a seat? Sarah comes to us from Milton Academy, where she works as Associate Director of Analytics for their Finance and Operations Department. She is a Braintree resident. And what I will say is that as a group, we were uniquely impressed by not only the skills that she presents, but also the obvious acumen that she possesses as an individual, her desire to give back to the community in which she lives. And many of the answers that she gave throughout the interview process, which just led us to be excited about the possibility of her coming to Braintree. So I present it to you in the hopes that you'll approve. As you know, Finance and Operations is one of the positions that advises.
Welcome.
Hi.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
You want to tell us a little bit about yourself, a little bit about why you want to come to Braintree or contribute to your hometown?
Sure. So as Jim said, I'm a Braintree resident. I've lived here since 2017. I'm currently at Milton Academy, where I am the Associate Director of Analytics. So a lot of that work falls in the category of financial projections on the expense and revenue side, contract work from RFPs to contract execution, benchmarking different financial and operational data, and general change management, leading committees and teams on special projects. I'm excited to join Braintree because this is the community where I live. These are the schools where my children will go. So that was really what motivated me to send my resume and apply for this job and I'm excited to join the team.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Wow. Madam Chair. I just want to say welcome and we enjoy having you come here and give your presentation. We're excited to have somebody from the community show interest in being part of the school. So that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair? Ms. Sowers.
Congratulations. I'm looking through your resume, pretty impressive. It's nice that you're coming back to your hometown and see your kids grow up in the school and you working in the school district. But yeah, congrats.
Thank you.
Mr. Devon?
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Mr. Cronin, for your time here. It's greatly appreciated. It's lovely to have you here and I think it's going to be a great experience for you, having your children go to the same schools where you're going to be, shall we say, have your fingerprints in many of the different schools here. I think it's going to be a wonderful opportunity for you. I wish you nothing but success. Thank you. Congrats.
As Mr. Lee said, the subcommittee, the committee that interviewed, we interviewed a number of candidates and we're all very enthusiastic about, about your candidacy. And you know, obviously, being a Braintree resident and your, and your resume speaks for itself. So we're very excited to have you join us. We have to officially vote at this point, but I know you also met with her as well, make a course?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, with that, do I have a motion?
Some move, Madam Chair.
Second, I have a motion by Mr. Devon and a second by Ms. Sowers to appoint Sarah Kaufman as our Finance and Operations Director, July 1st?
I will negotiate a date.
We'll negotiate a date, okay. All right, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Congratulations. Welcome.
So much.
Mr. Cronin, is this your last school committee meeting? Mr. Cronin, will you join us for our next school committee meeting on June 6th? Yes, no, I also want to extend my gratitude to you as well for all the years of service to the, to the schools. All of our major projects have been under your tutelage, East, South, all the MSBA contracts. We've had all the confidence in the world when we come to you for numbers or any of the presentations you've done. So again, really appreciate all the work that you've done and I wish you all the best and I'm a little jealous of your retirements, but hopefully you'll, you'll be available to us if we have questions for the interim. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on. From the school committee, school committee representative updates.
Yeah, I just wanted to express my thanks to all the support throughout these, these months. As much as I was able to serve the Braintree School Committee, I was also able to learn a lot. Being in these meetings have been a great experience for me, to not only like see how different things kind of work out within the town, but also just to get a sense of what meetings like this are like. So I just wanted to express my thank you and yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you as well. I definitely have learned a lot throughout these meetings. I also did want to say like how it was exciting to end the year on a normal note, you could say. It was fun today. We did the bike parade, so we went like across the access road and everything and tomorrow we have our car parade. So that's going to be exciting.
Did you canoe across the lake?
I did not. I watched, but I was not in.
Very good decision, yeah.
Yeah.
And prom is next week?
June 2nd.
June 2nd. And then we will all be at graduation to give out diplomas this year, so that would be same thing, some normalcy. So it'd be really nice to get back to the way things were, I guess, yeah, normalcy. So that's great. Thank you for your contribution again. Anything you want to add?
Not much going on with the underclass and the juniors. I guess I just want to express thank you to our senior representatives on this committee. This was my first year, I've learned a lot from them and working under them and I'm excited to continue my role on this committee next year. And all the other grades, of course, still going to be at the school. Are excited to see the seniors go and we're just preparing with our usual activities and getting up to the next school year in the fall.
Are you a rising senior? Quite a thought. Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Policy and Education Subcommittee updates. Ms. Tuffy.
So Policy and Education Subcommittee met on May 19th and we discussed three topics. First, policy for grades K through 4 and 5 through 8, report card update, dress code. The committee voted to bring the revised K through 4 and 5 through 8 homework policies to the full committee for first reading. The change in elementary homework policy from K to 5 to K to 4 aligns with fifth grade moving to the middle schools. Assignment notebooks, while still will be, they'll still be available, they will no longer be required as students have other ways to access homework assignments through Google Classroom or Aspen. And also timeframes were specified for math, as well as reading homework in grades 1 through 3. So that, those revisions were in your packet and tonight is the first reading for that. Second, Ms. Miller presented proposed elementary report card changes that include a more consistent standard space format for grades K through 3. Final updates are expected to be presented to the full school committee in June with Aspen software updates occurring over the summer. Also, the elementary principals have requested a return to printing report cards and sending them home with students. And finally, the Subcommittee has asked for a review of the dress code policy with respect to gender and race. The next meeting of the Policy and Education Subcommittee will be scheduled after a draft is ready for them to review.
Thank you, Ms. Tuffy. Were we creating a committee to review?
Funny you should ask. So having heard Ms. Tuffy's comments, Ms. Miller really spearheaded the work that led to the policy being brought to the Policy Subcommittee. So I just take a few moments and ask Ms. Miller to kind of explain to you what the process was and how we work with her today.
Thank you. So in terms of the process for homework policy in particular, we really started the conversation and I know I had updated this full school committee, I believe it was towards the beginning of the winter. We really started the conversation as we came back to school five full days a week and eliminated the term asynchronous assignments, which is something that we were very used to last year in our hybrid approach to education. And with that, while we've certainly had a lot of conversations about implementation of homework policies by level, by department, in different subject areas, we also had some conversations at the administratively, at the administrative level about the policy in particular. So the conversation then first went to our curriculum board. The curriculum board has representations K through 12 from classroom teachers, specialists, principals and directors. From there, new this year, we actually formed subcommittees. So we have an elementary Subcommittee, a middle school Subcommittee and a high school Subcommittee that has representation from the full curriculum board, but then also members from each of our schools to make sure that we're really representing again every single department and every single interest for all 10 of the schools in our system. So the Subcommittee did a lot of work in terms of talking to teachers about the policies in particular. We also did the survey, which had come before the school committee first, survey out to families, asking specifically, how do you feel about the amount of homework that your child is being given? How do you feel about the types of assignments? And sort of how is homework met in your household? Is it met with a lot of frustration, potentially some excitement, or something that we just have to get done? So using information from the administrative team, as well as the curriculum board, the Subcommittee, and then also the family feedback, we put before you a draft, which again, has already been presented to the Policy and Education Subcommittee. Thank you, Ms. Tuffy, for reviewing the changes. I'll add just a couple from middle school in particular. So while the designation K to 4 through 5, so like Ms. Tuffy has said, changing the designations K 4, 5, 8, just in line with how our schools are now structured, adding the term guardians after parents, just to represent the family situations that we have in our school system. Information specific about the assignment notebooks, specifying math. So the only other item I did want to call your attention to for middle school in particular was removing the separate grade will also be included for homework. What has traditionally been happening is homework at the middle school level is 10% to 15% of the overall grade and it has always been factored into the full grade for that course. But then on the report card, it's also presented to families as a separate grade. So it's always been included, will continue to include that. We're not making any recommendations to change the percentage, but instead of having that separate grade included and highlighted on the report card, where we now have the family portal for Aspen and parents are frequently checking. where we now have the family portal for Aspen and parents are frequently checking not only Aspen, but also Google Classroom, which is another big shift that we made last school year, where parents and guardians have the opportunity to sign up for alerts whenever something is, whenever an assignment is posted on Google Classroom or graded on Google Classroom, we felt like highlighting that separate grade was no longer necessary. Happy to answer any questions about the process or particular language.
Any questions from the committee? I know this is the first reading, we just got this today, so.
Right, and I think it's important to just understand again what the process was that was followed.
Absolutely.
Most of you know that the high school was reviewed back in 2016, so there's no substantive changes to that at this point. And certainly, it is a first reading, that next meeting we can discuss it. Do you feel if you'd like, I do want just to highlight the collaborative work that Ms. Miller has done.
Saros.
Thank you for all your work on this. Quick question, I know K through four at the elementary have trimesters and the middle high school, will that still stay the same?
Yes, so this is really just homework policy. So I know that Ms. Tuffy had mentioned conversations about amendments to the report card. That would be separate from that.
Okay.
At some point, probably in June, we'll come back if that be more informational. This is truly a policy that you folks have been running. In terms of report card, we'll come and we'll show you what the changes will be. It's more operational, but I think you'll see it's relatively consistent with the the structure in terms of trimesters or quarters. But also, I think does a much better job aligning at each grade level what's being done in the classrooms compared to that. So we'll bring that back to you.
And they'll be printed now and sent home for seniors, like the olden days?
Printed up and sent home. I think one of the concerns that was expressed multiple times was that some of our families truly struggle to access things from a technology standpoint. If you are familiar with Aspen and you use it quite frequently, it's relatively easy to kind of adapt to. If you only use it three times a year or four times a year, it's much more difficult. And I think principals recognize that not every single parent was able to access what was trying to be communicated. So those hard copies with parent square text and phone calls saying it's coming, you know, get Johnny at the bus stop and go through his bag, it's going to be in there. We're just hopeful we can get it, again, more effectively to families.
Any other questions, Mr. Devon?
I don't know if I heard this correctly, so we're still going to have it on Aspen. We're also going to give a hard copy. Okay, great. Don't suspend us, I think that that works well, thank you. And Aspen is tough to get through.
I know it.
Yeah.
So this is a first reading. So we'll bring this up after your next meeting.
Yes, I think that the homework policy, the work that was done on the homework policy was right on target. It reflects changes in the way parents and students access homework. And and the the elimination of the separate grade for homework in at middle school levels also well thought out, so. So we can do a second reading at the next so everybody can read through it, if that's acceptable.
Yes. Okay, so we'll take it up for the next meeting for approval. Thank you, Ms. Miller, for all your work, thanks to committee, all the representatives for their contribution as well. It's homework can be tough, you know, and it's, as you said, it's not always a positive thing in some households, so I appreciate all that work. All right, moving on, is there anything else for, I'm sorry, for policy, Ms. Tuffy? Anything else on policy?
No, we're just waiting until after the principals have reviewed the dress code policy before we set our next meeting.
Thank you. Let's see. To Finance and Operations, okay, so our, we didn't have our own meeting. We, our last meeting was actually with the Town Council Ways and Means, which was last Wednesday, the 18th, where the school budget was presented or discussed with members of the of the Ways and Means. So I'd like to thank members of the Ways and Means, they had a lot of very thorough and thoughtful questions about our our budget. And obviously, I want to thank Mr. Lee and Mr. Cronin for providing all the answers and clarifications for the for the Ways and Means. I think they they recognize the struggles that we're having with the budget. I know that they're advocates for education and I appreciate that, that they're kind words and and I know that the Town Council can't add any money to the budget. But again, they're very supportive of the school budget, so I appreciate their advocacy. And and I also see they know, they recognize that the real danger that we're in for next year. So again, I want to thank them for for all the work on that. So we have not set another meeting for Finance and Operations, we'll have to discuss that amongst ourselves, or we'll send out a notification. I'm not sure now that the budget cycle is through that we need to meet anytime soon, but we'll we'll make that decision as a Subcommittee. We also have a consideration of second reading and or approval of the potential merger of Maintenance Department. I know we have representatives from the DPW. This has become a regular roadshow for you guys to come to our school committee meetings. I don't know if anybody wants to come up and sit. And I'm sure the committee has additional questions and then we'll discuss next steps. All right, I know this is a second reading, does anybody have questions from the last time we met? And it was called a man.
Thank you. I want to thank Mr. McGordy for, and the facility crew for giving me a tour of Dority Gym last week. I was very impressed. And, you know, there's no doubt, based on my observation and the conversation, that the Facilities Department could take on the school buildings, same dedication and pride that they did with the other projects they have going on in town. However, I do have a few questions, one of which was during the last school committee meeting. Ms. Tuffy asked a question about how the capital accounts and the revolving accounts, which included the rental income, would be handled if the departments merged. So I was just wondering if that was discussed further in the.
With respect to the rental revolving account, it would be our intention to turn it over to the town, to the DPW.
So that would all be turned over? And that money would be used for maintenance?
Which it is now, so that's a revolving account that we utilize to repair things, you know, that rental income.
We used it, how do we ensure that that'll be used for, you know, for me?
That's all part of the discussion. I know that, not to interrupt, but Ms. Lee and Mr. Cronin have met with the department heads a number of times over the past, since our last meeting.
Weekly, to make sure that whatever transition is going to occur does so smoothly. We've had conversations about not only the existing operating budget lines that would be impacted, but also things like the rental revolving account. You know, in essence, the proof is in the pudding, that the money goes to them because the repairs go to them. And to identify things that need to be taken care of, that's just one other revenue scheme that they'll be looking at in order to fund those projects. So, you know, we have had those conversations, we'll continue to have those conversations. You know, it's, it's, all will not be done by tomorrow, it's going to take some time. And I think we have a good setup in terms of sharing information at this point.
Okay, thank you. So my understanding from reading through some of the questions that the Finance and Operations Subcommittee had and the answers from the town was that the the school committee can vote to leave the shared maintenance merger agreement at any time, is that correct? Just wanted to confirm that. And I know my last comments about, some of the responses were that, you know, some of them were prefaced with, you know, a formal assessment needs to be conducted first before some of these things can be answered. So I'm just curious as to how other things might have been handled or would would a feasibility study make sense in something like this or no? Like.
If that's why you're doing it, I mean, we've purposely not done a feasibility study on the high school. As I think you recall, when we approached the MSBA to partner with them for a project at the high school, one of their first requirements, should they invite us in, would be to do a feasibility study. And if we had done one previously, that would not suffice, they'd want us to do a new one. So from that perspective, we've purposely not done it. There's been money voted on the town side to do the feasibility study. But until that timing is is correct for the MSBA, we would not do it.
We want to do that closer to when we get accepted.
We want to be invited in, so once we're invited in and they say, you know, now you have to do this, this is a new study, we're in position to get it.
Right, and I just mean assessment of like all the schools and kind of, you know, what was, you know, the assessment of all the buildings, not just the high school, but, yeah, okay. Another question, how would this merger agreement change expectations for net school spending? For example, in other towns, employee salaries inside the shared maintenance agreement are included in the town's report out of the net school spending, even if one or two maintenance workers never touched the school property. So I know that unionized school custodians and the maintenance workers stay out of the shared agreement, but I was just wondering how that might affect that school spending for us?
There is some.
It won't, I'm currently meeting with the Finance Department, DPW, or the Facilities Group, and the Town Accountant. Now, what we are planning on doing is taking the school accounts that we use now, making similar accounts on the town side. When they do work in schools, it will be up to them to make sure the school costs, the school salaries all get bumped into those lines. When the end of year report comes, which is what that school spending reports come out of, when that is done, the town, as it does now, will provide us with all of those numbers to fill into that report.
Thank you. And one last question, other towns use their maintenance department as an internal contractor to the school district? Is this something that was thought of, you know, considered in Braintree?
I mean, we've done those sorts of things before. This is just a much bigger piece of it, that's all. You know, they will be doing the work, they will be bringing in outside people when it needs to happen. But just as the Dority Gym, just as the electricity at the high school, when there has been a need to bring them in, we have left them.
Thank you. Any other questions from committee?
Got a couple of comments, if I may, Madam Chair.
Devon.
Okay. I think it's important that people realize what the sort of the steps are. I mean, we are giving our schools over to the town and they'll be managing that. The first step is to go through and assess every single school. There are certain places in these schools you haven't been, Mike, and some of your group haven't been there too. I think it's important that people realize that you assess what the problems are. You come up with some type of a hierarchy as to, you know, what's important versus what's necessary. And you, shall we say, come up with a hit list, so to speak. And then you have to look at what you have. Essentially, what we've done is we've taken the Facilities Department with the with the town and doubled the amount of people they have from five to 10. But what we've done is we've taken the square footage and quadrupled it. So I think it's really important that people realize that if your only goal to this is to save money, let's remember, streamlining and saving money are not the same thing. If you think this is just a dollars and cents thing, you're not doing the homework. You have to look at what we're trying to do here, which is maintain the assets. If it's something that you think is dollars and cents, then you're not on the same page. We have assets that we know are atrophying, and they have been atrophying for 30 years. We didn't get this way in a short five, 10, 15, no, it was 30 years to get in this type of a situation. 30 years ago, we had 25 people that were maintaining our schools. We had one or two more schools, but now we're giving them 10. I think it's going to be very important that we assess what success means. It's not just dollars and cents, it's going to, his group coming in, which is professional, I'm not saying the others weren't professional, but the fact that they can lay their hands on the water department, the the inspectional services through the building department, these types of things, there are one phone call rather than two or three. And I think it's very important that the people realize that Mike is one person, there's a hierarchy above him. He has the DPW director, he has the mayor, he has the chief of staff. If in one year, they do not have 10, 15 people doing this, we're just going to see more of the same. It's my opinion that you're going, in three to five years, if you do not have 20, 25 people, then it's being given lip service. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Devon. Make a force.
Thank you. First, I just want to make note, on the council side, Councilor Steve O'Brien did initiate on the council side a combined maintenance and facilities. I think that this is for me, a very important vote after assessing every building and back in 2020 and seeing some of the things that needed to be done. It was it was thanks to Mr. Cronin that I was able to go around and see all those buildings. And I appreciate taking the time to do that and explain everything to me. I think that, you know, your leadership and, you know, the collaboration that's happened since I became mayor, I've been, I'm very appreciative of, and I think that I learned a lot from you. And I think that this is a great opportunity for us to to bring this combined facilities together and really concentrate on the schools. We've had a lot of success on the town side with this facilities group. And I think it's over the past few years, it started under Mayor Sullivan, and over the past few years, it really has become such a great entity. And and I have so much confidence in what they do. Just based on some of the projects that they've done just since I've been mayor. And I think that, you know, bringing them together with with the school maintenance and facilities, we've proven that they work really well together on the high school and some roof issues that have happened over the years. There's been, there's been collaboration. Now, we can take that to the next level. And and I thank, you know, Ms. Lee as well for working with me and my my department heads and really coming up with a plan. So I think that if you look at the progress that we've made at at our town buildings and, you know, we are looking to get rid of the, you know, sell off the or utilize the buildings that are no longer necessary on the town side, it gives us great opportunity here. And my focus as mayor under this combined facilities is the schools. The schools have been really most important thing to me since I took office. And, you know, the New South Middle School was on the top of the list and, and, you know, Chairperson Heager and her help, we, you know, we got the debt exclusion passed and we were able to move forward with it. And very happy about that. But I will say, and and former school committee member, Jen Dolan, she was, she was great. So I think that this is a very important point, you know, in in the history of our school facilities in order for us to bring the school facilities and maintenance and our town facilities and maintenance together to create one unified force, utilize, as previous speaker had mentioned, you know, all of the different assets we have within the DPW to be deployed to make sure that we take care of anything that needs to be taken care of. And, you know, obviously, you know, we're looking for cost savings by doing things in-house, but there'll be, there'll be situations where we have to do, have to go outside for certain things that we we can't do. But I'm fully confident that, you know, we will move forward in a positive way. And what's most encouraging is really the communication between Superintendent Lee and my staff and those those continued meetings. And what we will do as we progress is we'll make sure there's an update here at the school committee meetings just so that everybody is, you know, aware of exactly where we're at. And we'll continue to do that. And, you know, I'll tell you, when when facilities started, it was, you know, wonderful, a wonderful idea that really has grown into a tremendous department of individuals that have such a passion for what they do. And I appreciate what they do every day. So I will be supporting this and ask for everyone's support. And I, and I really want to thank the school committee as a whole and the Finance Committee for really doing a thorough job and making sure that they they asked every question that they could. So thank you all for that and appreciate your attention and hope that we move forward with a positive vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Lynch.
So thanks for coming again, guys, and it was late, 5:00 here. I'd say the most common thing that, you know, both teachers and parents say to me or bring up are our buildings. It's usually problems, right? They're always bringing it up. But just from talking with you guys and get to know you guys over the past month or so, I know, I know you guys view that as opportunity, right? That you guys are the foundation that kind of sets these buildings straight. No foundation, not everyone's going to see what you guys do, right? But it's the most important part of. But it's the most important part of, you know, of the house. So you guys have, you know, a lot coming your way, but the way that you guys look at it as opportunity rather than problems is why, you know, you'll have my vote on this, you know? And I have all your numbers too, so.
Any other comments or questions? Just remind everybody, the Finance and Operations Subcommittee did move this forward before the last school committee meeting with favorable action. And as we've said, communication is going to be key, coming to school committee meetings and giving us updates and all that if it, if and when it passes. So tonight's vote is to support the ordinance to establish a centralized maintenance apartment combining facility staff for the purpose of maintaining all buildings and land owned by the town, including school buildings and grounds. So the town council voted favorably on this December 13th, 2011, and they require the school committee by a majority vote as well to approve this. So this would actually allow the town to proceed with assessing the buildings, which I think we're all very anxious to see and, and to move forward with the whole process. So we'll be, if favorable action tonight, we'll begin formalizing the discussions, the budget transfer, the timeline, you know, the transition plan. And I know as, as we've discussed, Mr. Lee and Mr. Cronin and perhaps our, our new Finance and Operations, Ms. Coughlin, will be meeting going forward as far as, we all know that this is going to be a long, a long haul. It's not something that's going to happen overnight. And again, and again, appreciate you coming to Finance and Operations meeting. Appreciate you coming here, answering all of our questions. Again, Finance and Operations, as well as Mr. Cronin and Mr. Lee have asked copious questions about the whole, the changes. So with that.
I make the motion to. It's been favorable.
Second, I have a motion by Mica Corrus and a second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous. So we look forward, if you can come to our June meeting and we can start discussing next steps, budget, timeline, et cetera. I'd appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Have any, anything else for Finance and Operations? With that, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Deven.
Hi.
Tuffy.
Hi.
Saris.
Hi.
Mica Corrus.
Hi.
Ms. Pablo Mia. Ms. Lynch. And the chair votes aye. We are adjourned.